All right, good morning. How's everyone today?
Excellent.
Thank you. Well, we've got a full day today. Thank you all for being here. I know all of you here on this side of the room are here because you just want to be part of city council. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you, Julio, for being here today. This is the wonderful 27th day of June of 2023. It is 11 o'clock. At this time, city council convenes in city council chambers in work session regarding items for presentation and discussion on such issues that will require in-depth consideration by the city council. No action will be taken today, but we will start off with hearing and discussing or hear presentations regarding the Broadway brick presentation. We will have a short presentation from some slides, Ms. Joy, and then a nice nostalgic video that we will be able to see. And then, time permitting, we'll see all of that video, then city council will complete that and move straight into executive session. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good to see everybody here at a little bit.
Apologize. One housekeeping item, we do have Ms. Patterson-Harris, and she is present, but she is present via Zoom, and she will be hearing, right, Ms. Patterson-Harris? Make sure she's present with us.
I am here.
There she is. Good morning.
Good morning to you.
All right, so we have Ms. Patterson-Harris, and she will be available for any type of questions, but she will be up on the big screen. All right, turning it back over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you again, and welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here a little bit earlier today. Mayor, if we could switch our inputs to the podium. Council, your first presentation today will be the presentation from staff. If you recall, late last summer, staff was tasked with taking your current brick preservation ordinance, following through that process, and ultimately coming back to you with the conclusion thereof. Assistant City Manager Eric Rahino is going to walk you through that presentation today. It'll take all of the three recommendation groups that are in there. Following the completion of that, Councilmember Joy does have a presentation and a video. Council, there is no action today. If you have guidance or input for staff at this time, please give it to us. If instead, you want to take time and absorb this, we have provided copies of all these to you, please feel free to get back to myself, to Eric, or to the crew, and we will work on that. So, the short version is this does come back at a later date for you to ultimately select a design, but that day is not today. So, with that, Eric, if you would start through the staff presentation, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Council. Good to be with you this morning. And I believe we may need to change the input. I believe it was already a preloaded presentation.
Maybe?
Moncho's podium input. Does that need to go off?
It's the one I sent yesterday.
Oh, I see. I thought Chris just put it on there.
Is it not on your screen?
It's not, no, sir.
Okay, I'll run that from here, Mayor and Eric, if you'll just key me which is appropriate.
Great.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, so, go and get started. So, as Mr. Atkinson mentioned, over the last, really, the last six months, we've been going through the process of seeking input specifically with the design of Broadway, with the understanding that the design is really only one of several pieces of Broadway that need to be discussed at a future date. But starting with the design, that's really the most critical piece before you can get into the phasing of Broadway, how to pay for Broadway, the funding portion of it. So, we've really focused the last six months on really seeking input related to the design of Broadway. Before I dive into the four different groups that we have input to, that we've received input over the last six months on, before I dive into that, I want to start out with a little bit of history, then we'll dive into the four groups and the different pieces of information that we have from the four different groups as far as the design of Broadway. So, construction, for the most part, regarding our brick streets occurred between 1920 and 1930. As you can see, and I don't know, Jared, if this is the right, this one may be a little bit different, but you can go and go to the next slide. Construction of most of our brick streets as they exist today, that's the map right there, occurred between 1920 and 1930. The history of the big streets, all paving after 1930 was basically constructed in asphalt. In 1982, there's a resolution adopted by council that did allow for the protection of all of the city's historic brick. And in 1982, also, the city purchased 345,000 used bricks from the cities of Plainview and Crosby Ten to be used on Broadway. Over the years, the city council has adopted several policies, ordinances, resolutions related to addressing and preserving historic bricks. I won't touch on all of them, but there are several ordinances. You've got the downtown revitalization plan, the public improvement design standards, as well as the, most recently, with the 2020 ordinance adopted in a couple of years, just a few years ago, and that's where I'm really going to focus the next several slides. This particular ordinance that came about in 2020 was a result of seven public meetings and addresses brick streets, but that occurred all in 2020. And one of the key takeaways on the next slide that I want to really emphasize, and this is where our focus has been the last six months, has been, prior to the council adopting a design for Broadway, it states that you shall seek input from four particular groups: the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Committee, the Central Business District, Tax Increment Financing District, the city manager, and the public. At this time, we have done that over the last six months. We have that input to walk you through where we've been the last six months. We've had a total of eight combined meetings between the UDHPC and the CBD TIF. We also did about a one-month-long survey online. We had some hard copies submitted as well. We also did a public input meeting, and Councilwoman Joy also did a district town hall meeting. To dive into the very first group that I want to touch on is the CBD TIF. CBD TIF met several times and considered several recommendations related to Broadway's design, and I'm just going to go through these. And by the way, these were also provided to you in detail in the attachments that we sent yesterday afternoon. So, you've got the CBD TIF recommendation signed by the board chair, as well as the UDHPC, the survey data, but I'll touch on these today here at the meeting. So, first of all, a design firm should be hired to provide a complete design for the street. Underground utilities should be considered at the same time as street repair. There are many water and sewer lines. There's private utilities that need to be taken into account as we go through this process. The design should be a balance between what is historical and what is practical. And the CBD TIF's preference would be that brick be used in key intersections only, not in the drive lanes for several reasons. I'll touch on these. Cost of material and installation, does not require tearing up other streets to gather material. Drive lanes and bike lanes will be smoother and easier to repair. They also believe this will have citizen buy-in because it honors the history of the street without over-expending, overspending, and it allows for more reasonable maintenance. Historic bricks should not be used in several areas, based on their recommendation, including Broadway eastbound, beginning at Avenue E, sidewalks, back of curb, bike lanes, and crosswalks. But it does say that historic bricks should be incorporated into the design. So, that is the CBD TIF recommendation, and you have that in detail in your supporting documentation. The UDHPC also made a recommendation. First of all, they indicated do not use Thurber bricks where it wasn't originally located, so East of Avenue E and on sidewalks, which doesn't exist there today. Using Thurber brick as possible, as much as possible on the entire width of the street to retain the historic image sense of Broadway. As a minimum, they're encouraging the city council to use the Thurber brick on the drive lanes. They're also indicating to create a design that emphasizes, reinforces the image of historic red brick from curb to curb with the goal to minimize the use of other colors, materials across the width of the street. And to wrap up, the UDHC recommendation, you've got a few additional items. If Thurber brick can't be used for whatever reason, maybe there's not sufficient brick, they listed out some priorities. The highest priority would be to use Thurber brick on the drive lanes, using the new, consider using new brick pavers in the intersections, much like what has been done right outside of the citizens' tower. Redefine curb to curb by moving the curb and perhaps even changing the width of the street. And there's a couple of concepts I'm going to show you that they presented as part of their recommendation that are from the Lubbock Heritage Society, and I'll touch on those here in a little bit as we get into those two particular slides. But parallel parking, flux zone area, new brick pavers of similar color, as well as red-colored concrete as a possible option. Last recommendation is to encourage the coordinated replacement of utilities. Again, there are several city-owned utilities out there that are in need of replacement, water and sewer lines, as well as private utilities that we would need to coordinate with. If we can go to the first option, this next slide is one of the concepts put together by the Lubbock Heritage Society and is the preferred choice of the UDHPC recommendation. And this is, this separates bike lanes from drive lanes with the raised curb. The bike pavement area could be used, could be typical concrete. So, that's option one, and that's their preferred option. If that one can't be accomplished, their second option is puts bike lanes on the same plane as sidewalk. You'll notice that the drive lanes have historic brick, and the other is appears to be stained concrete. So, those are the two concepts that they are recommending, with the first one presented being their highest and preferred option. We held a public meeting on May 25th, included about 50 citizens were in attendance, took place over about an hour and a half, and maybe 30 minutes after, just discussions with citizens afterwards, so a total of about two hours. Just kind of trying to capture some general comments that were made. Many were in favor of preserving the historic brick in full width or some version of a hybrid on Broadway. There were several questions regarding cost associated with the different types of construction materials, and again, we went back to, before we can really dive into the cost and the phasing, we really need to have an idea of what we're building and narrow that, narrow that design down. Most concurred that Broadway needed improvement, and you'll find that was the general consensus of the survey. I think most people feel that something needs to be done on Broadway. Many claim that there's a lack of maintenance that resulted in the condition of Broadway, the surface of what it is today, with really a lot of focus and emphasis on the base of the current road. And then, there was a general consensus that Broadway east of I-27 should have a unique design with historic brick, since it currently does not have historic brick. The other piece of the public input was the survey, which we launched on May 15th. We closed on June 13th. We had a total of 3,389 online responses. We had 102 hard copies, for a total of 3,491 total responses. You've also been provided with the detail in the questions of each survey, what the responses were, but I'm going to touch on these on this slide and just summarize. About 73% indicated that the city should move forward with a Broadway project of some sort. About 60% think the design should be the same from University to MLK. About 40% think maintaining the historic brick is the most important aspect of Broadway. 39% think the drive lane should be asphalt or concrete. About 38% think the intersection should be historic brick. And about 43% think the parking spaces should be asphalt or concrete. 54% think the bike lanes should be asphalt or concrete. And about 46% think new brick pavers should be used instead of historic brick. And that's kind of just a general rundown of the survey, and you've got the detail, and we can go into those, any questions you have, if you have any questions. As far as participation, this slide outlines the various ZIP codes that were typed in by the participants of the survey, and lets you know that the larger the ZIP code, the more survey responses we had. So, at this point, we've gone through three, the three different areas of the four pieces of input that we've been in the process of seeking per the ordinance. The fourth piece is the city manager recommendations. We, the staff worked with the city manager on these recommendations, and I'll go through these. The historic brick or modern brick paver should be used in intersections to highlight the historic aspect of the corridor. Vehicle drive lanes should be constructed with modern asphalt or concrete materials and construction practices. The parking area and bike lanes should be constructed with modern asphalt or concrete materials and construction practices. The design aspects of the three sections should be considered separately to accommodate the uniqueness of each neighborhood while creating a similar theme all throughout. So, you've got University to Q, Q to E, E to MLK, or the Canyon Lakes. Those are the three different areas, and we think tying a theme with all three is important. Another item to consider would be race intermediate between University and Avenue Q. And then, again, going back to the utility discussion, city-owned utilities should be rehabilitated prior to any construction. There's some old water and sewer lines that need to be replaced, and that needs to be a part of this project as we move forward. And then, the last piece, the last recommendation from the city manager is construction and maintenance should be considered in any designs, the cost of those. With that, you have the recommendations of the UDHPC, the CBD TIF, the general public, as well as city manager. That's the work that we've done over the last six months together, and again, really just focus on the design. There's more discussion to be had regarding cost and phasing at a later time. But with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you have on the input.
Thank you, Eric, very much for that presentation. Could you go back one slide, please? Maybe define a bit more when you talk about "and" construction practices? Give me your thoughts on what you mean by "and" the construction practices, and what does that look like?
So, you know, there's certain design standards that we adhere to whenever we build a road to ensure longevity. We would just want to follow our current practices that are set by engineering, you know, so you've got minimum bases, just current practices that we abide, that we, in essence, what we're doing on all of our bond projects and all of our road projects. So, just current specifications as we have defined today for our road standard.
Thank you. Mr. McBrayer.
Reference to page five, Eric. Can you tell me what the 2006 ordinance adopted in response to the emergency utility repairs? What was that about? What did it say?
So, general summary of it, it addresses utility repairs, installation, and street repairs and resurfacing projects that had led to patchwork of brick, and it was really in a focus to try to preserve brick where we could. And I don't know if Mr. Franklin has anything to add on the 2006 ordinance, that he may have a little more history on it than I do.
Sure.
That's exactly it. Prior to then, when we had utilities coming, replacing utility pavements or utility cuts, that pavement repair would be done in concrete or asphalt, and we wound up with this patchwork. We've got a brick street with asphalt patches and utility cuts. So, in 2006, council adopted an ordinance to stop that practice, and when they went in and did a utility cut, whether it's a water or sewer line, whether it's a fiber optic or telephone lines, if it was a brick street, it had to be repaired in a brick, with a brick.
And then, my other question would be in response to the idea that the condition of Broadway is because of a lack of maintenance. How would you respond to that?
Well, you maintain brick streets, a little different than you maintain an asphalt street. Where with asphalt street, we've got the ability to go out and mill and relay, we can put an overlay on it, we can maintain a brick, a asphalt street or something like that. With brick street, it's a little different. If there is a pothole or if there is a failure, usually that's a base failure that has to be removed. We have to rebuild the base, we have to put the brick back in a better manner. So, really, while it may be a maintenance of a certain patch, when you're looking at the street itself, it's really a rebuild of the street, as opposed to a maintenance of the street and putting a surface overlay on it. You just don't put surface overlays on brick streets.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Good morning. I know that we have a lot of aging infrastructure in downtown Lubbock, and I know that we, there's a lot of discussion about the bricks, but if we weren't doing the bricks, would we at some point start addressing the old infrastructure that is under the bricks?
The answer is yes. We certainly wouldn't want to wait for the infrastructure to fill, and there are some aging lines that, regardless of whether this project moves forward or not, as far as resurfacing Broadway, I think that the old water and sewer lines will have to be replaced at some point in the future.
Some of them are as old as the bricks, aren't they?
That an accurate statement?
So, yes, you know, just because something's old doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be replaced in that manner. So, if it's working, it's fulfilling its duty, and it's still in good condition. So, just because it's old doesn't mean we replace it. But we do have some major sewer line rehabilitations downtown that we're actually doing, working on right now. And in 2008, the city of Lubbock went in and replaced all of the large water lines in downtown. So, all of the east-west lines paralleling the streets actually were replaced for fire protection. We were seeing reduced fire protection in downtown. So, there are lines that are maybe old that don't need to be repaired or replaced at this time, but if we're going to put a new street on it, we would want to replace those, even if they are in working condition, so that their life has extended the life of the new street.
Mayor, I have one more question.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
After we've seen all the presentations, and I know we're not making a decision today, but is there a way to find a happy medium in between all three so that we're addressing a little bit of everything? Is that a possibility, or are we just going to stick to one design? This is how it is?
You have all the input, and I mean, the goal would be, you're going to look at it by section. You know, you've got the three sections. I mean, the first thing would be, well, you know, what does it look like for each section? And, I mean, the goal would be to try to come up with a happy medium if you can, but I mean, it's, you've got, there's a lot of similarities amongst a lot of them, but it's, that's part of the, part of the joy of, you know, currently working on this and really trying to compile all four pieces of that information together, so.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other questions of Mr. Rahino?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the meetings that have been provided, a couple of them, in addition to just visiting with folks in the community. And I would kind of just break that down and say that there were three things that had they been done to the brick street or had the ability to do to the big, the brick streets years ago, then we probably wouldn't be in this situation. But it's something that we definitely need to make sure that we consider this time, and that's number one, creating a solid foundation. And I think that goes with anything in life. And in addition to being strategic and careful in the placement of whatever it is that we do, and then making sure that the maintenance is, the maintenance is done on a consistent and as-needed basis. So, sorry, the dog food bowl is feeding. So, those are some of the things that folks were concerned about because they didn't have the background information in, with the fact that those bricks now are just sitting on dirt, and how it has been a contributing factor to how they have not maintained in a fashion that we'd like. Could we go back to, I think it's the slide number three with the, indicates the location of the bricks at this time? So, are we saying, this is just primarily just for Broadway, correct?
That's correct. Today's discussion is for Broadway, yes, ma'am.
And in order to address, and I don't know whether it'd be something that folks would be looking at or not, in order to address the other locations where bricks are, would that mean that we would follow the same exact pattern with those other streets? Or has anyone brought up the fact that maybe removing those streets and paving them with asphalt and concrete, and looking at Broadway as the primary focus? Because when we're talking brick streets, that's been the main location or the only location that we've actually had conversation about, unless someone knows that, some conversations that have been had, other than the ones that I'm aware of.
Right. The ordinance adopted in 2020 was very specific on brick streets, but it was especially specific on Broadway with being able to move forward with the design. You have a little more flexibility as a council regarding that ordinance as it relates to the other brick streets. With the, with Broadway itself, you're required to seek input on the four, from the four various groups that we've discussed before you do an actual, adopt an actual design. The other streets, you have more flexibility in that you don't, you may want to, but you don't have to seek, go through that same process. And one of the discussions that came up during, it was, I believe it was CBD TIF, in the event that it's determined that council wants to do, you know, whatever, whether maybe it's the drive lanes, or maybe it's just the intersections, or maybe it's the full width of Broadway, you know, there are other streets that have existing brick, and, you know, what do you do with those? Do you replace those? Do you, that's part of the discussion, part of a later discussion perhaps, but they're also in alleyways, and alleyways aren't protected. So, just a, just a thought along those lines.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Eric? All right, if there's no other questions, I'm going to have Ms. Joy. She has a presentation, and then we do have a short video, and I will let her address Mr. Rahino. Eric, I don't know if there's any questions. You might stay close. All right, Ms. Joy?
I just wanted to add that we did attempt to get, and we did get, a group from the TIF board and from UDHPC to get together and try to talk about if they could come up with a common solution, and we ended up with what you saw. We have a recommendation from the TIF, and we have a recommendation from UDHPC, and they are not together. So, when this issue came up, I did have a town hall, well-attended. It was out at the Groves Library. We had standing room only. Everybody was allowed to speak that wanted to speak. We stayed until nobody wanted to speak anymore. We were there about two hours. And so, as a result of that town hall, I asked some people to help me put into a presentation some of the ideas that were set forth at that meeting. In other words, these are not mine. These are ideas that came out of that meeting from people who were interested. We did have some people who were opposed to brick. One was by a city bus driver who drives them every day. He doesn't like them, and he said so, and that was fine. Another gentleman was just, he said, because they're rough, and they are right now, if you drive down them and you go as fast as some people like to go, yeah, you're going to have some issues, and he was concerned about, about that. But in all in all, it was a very good meeting. Everybody was congenial. We had a few laughs, but they were able to express their opinions. So, this slide presentation is representative of some of the ideas that came out of that meeting. So, city manager?
Next.
Next? We broke this up into sections because it makes a lot of sense, but from Avenue Q to Avenue E, which is actually the piece that the bond people talked about. They did not extend it to University in their discussions. They did not extend it to Martin Luther King. And so, this was a proposal that was brought up at that meeting, and they did have some of these slides, and you'll see some common slides. And on this one, it's historic bricks in the drive lanes. And then, this one is the one that could have the look to be like it is just outside to the east over here on Avenue K. When the building was redone, the street was torn up. So, you have historic red brick going from the pedestrian sign on down Avenue K. There are new black bricks in the walkway, and then on the other side, there were new red brick. And so, that's, that's an option. Obviously, we've done this one, and looks that way, and it's made a very nice, I think, a very nice and very smooth roadway down Avenue K. We always worry about pedestrian safety, and so, the theme through all of this, you're going to hear about what's safe, what's not, not safe. This is a, an option too that came from the UDHPC and was part of the slide presentation, trying to deal with the bike lanes. The bike lanes are an issue. I personally am scared. I personally am scared to death of the ones we have now because they are very difficult to travel on, and I'm always afraid somebody's going to fall off their bike right in front of me. So, there was a lot of time spent on this one at where you could put bike lanes if you continue to have bike lanes. And I understand that there are some parts of the city, or people in the city who don't think we need bike lanes on Broadway at all, and if that's the case, that will be an issue that will have to be discussed later. But on this one, this one particularly puts the bike lanes within a curb away from pedestrian traffic and away from automobiles. It's a suggestion from one of the groups. Okay, next. This was the slide that Mr. Rihano showed earlier that basically has the brick from curb to curb, and this is just what, what they think that it, it would look like, and again, you've got your bike lanes up on, closer to, off the curb. Next. Okay, Broadway to, basically, Avenue E to Martin Luther King Boulevard. In the original bond package, we included Avenue E, it's actually Avenue A, because at Avenue E, it goes underneath, the railroad goes under, and that's been concreted in because of water situation that exists when it rains. And so, we're really talking about, probably about Avenue A to Martin Luther King Boulevard. In the original bond package, it was Avenue A to Canyon Lake Drive, and at that time, the proposal was not for historic brick because historic brick never was on that road, and so, pavers were recommended for that. And that grew out of all of the conversations that we had on the master plan, where we wanted some continuity on Broadway all the way down to Martin Luther King, instead of stopping there at Avenue E like, like the freeway does. And it was very important to several members of council at that time that we do that, and so, it was also, at that time, there was actually an amount that was set aside to do those pavers from Avenue A down to Canyon Lakes. I don't think that's the place to stop, it needs to go on up personally to Martin Luther King Boulevard if, if that's done. So, next. This was just an depiction of what it might look like. Remember, when you go Avenue A down to Martin Luther King, you've got some beautiful scenery in there. You've got the park on one side, you know, the golf course kind of goes through both sides. It's really a very pretty area that we have. This one just shows a median, but those were proposed, were, were pavers, not historic brick. Next. And this, this is on bike lanes again, a couple of ideas that came out of it. The picture on the right is one where the bike lanes are actually on, on the other side of a, of a median with planning in it, which is something you could do. And then the one, the hand-drawn one on the left talks about putting, you could actually put bike lanes in the middle in a median if you need, if you so choose. This is a roundabout, and if, most of you will know or will have experienced the roundabout down in front of the Overton Hotel. If you take Avenue A to Martin Luther King, that would be a place that someone has recommended that we put a roundabout at that intersection as opposed to just another stoplight and turn lanes. Just another suggestion. Okay. Then from Avenue Q to University Avenue, that would be the third piece. Keeping in mind that at one time, we had medians all up and down from Avenue Q to University. This depiction here is the 1982 where they replaced, took the median out, replaced it with the Plainview and/or Crosbiton bricks, and you still see where that median is. There is still one median that exists just as you turn onto University off of Avenue Q going towards Texas Tech. And there were several of these medians going up and down the street that were, were taken out. I don't know why, 1982, I'm sure there was something going on at that time, but they did replace it with not our historic brick, but the Plainview and the Crosbiton historic brick. So, this is, is a slide that someone did that shows what it, what it would look like if you did the drive lanes in asphalt or concrete. This is the vision, going towards Texas Tech University. Next. These are some photos that someone took of our problems that we have not only with asphalt and concrete, but the problems we've had with brick on, on the right because we haven't maintained it. Now, I'm a defender of the brick. There wasn't anything wrong with the brick. I thought about wearing a brick costume today and crying and saying, please take care of me, please take care of me. We didn't take care of the bricks, we didn't take care of the bricks in the streets, and if they weren't properly installed, then that made the problem worse, and then if you get one little, you know, brick that's loose between water and freezing rain or just traffic. But we have the same problem over here with our concrete and our asphalt streets. If they're not maintained, then you end up with things that look like this. What I do know is that we have about a, a rotation on our streets that Mr. Franklin does. About every 10 years, we resurface streets, and in between, we do some other types of repairs to make them last longer. But we know 10, if we can get 10 years, okay, we're in pretty good shape. We can't always get 10 years out of either one. We've gotten 100 years out of bricks. Next. This is that same photo or slide that showed where they took out the, the median. This one, we had several people propose that between Avenue Q and University, where people travel a lot, where we have a lot of visitors, that we put back medians with trees. Nobody said put back a forest, they said put back trees, and don't put grass in the medians, but do some sort of, oh, crushed granite, whatever you want to call it, something in there. And honestly, it does, if I look at the picture, I'm like, gosh, I kind of like that. And so, that's one proposal between Avenue Q and University that was proposed. Next. That looks like the same one. Oh, it's a little bit, okay, it's a little bit different on the, on the curbs.
Colored concrete.
Colored concrete, yeah.
It's not the same statement.
Yeah, and the colored, you know, the colored concrete comes up quite a bit, and that is in some of the proposals, and it has been proposed by some of the people who have ideas about what to do with Broadway. And I commend all, all of the people who came to that town hall because they came with good ideas, they came with understanding the issues, but if you don't know what people want, then it's hard to make plans going forward. Next is something that, this is me. I think it's, it, it would be very, very nice if we could extend the brick in one form or the other, it wouldn't be historic brick, into the Texas Tech campus. I had an opportunity to visit it with Dr. Scuvenak, he was very excited about it because there's nothing pretty about the asphalt when you cross the street at University and Broadway. So, that's just a me slide, and I think Texas Tech, given their propensity to make things look nicer, would certainly partner with us on that. So, that's just a summary, I think, of slides. With that, those were ideas that came. There was one idea, and I didn't, didn't include anything in here, and it was from our friend Maury Stanley. You know, he's a firm believer in taking care of what we have, but he also had, had kind of a different idea, and he talked about closing off one of the streets on Broadway and make it a, a common space. I did not do a rendering of that because I don't, not sure how you do that, it creates all kinds of problems with police and fire, but it was an idea that was out there, and I wanted him to know that we acknowledged that, that he did do that, and I appreciate his, his input, along with some people who couldn't come, who sent emails to us. There were also minutes of that meeting that were made, and they are available to anybody who wants to read the minutes from that, from that meeting, if you want to hear more about what people were proposing. Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Joy, let's play just a few minutes of that video that, that we have in the interest of time, because we do have a fairly lengthy executive session.
Yeah. This is a video that was sent, I think, to the mayor, it was sent to me. It's not a video of the, of laying the Lubbock streets, but it is a video of how those streets, is it Lubbock? Jane Henry says it's Lubbock.
It's actually a video from the Thurber Brick Company, the Southwest Collection, it's from the Southwest Collections Thurber Brick Company.
Well, okay. None of us were here when this was done, so we don't-
But it's from the time period.
Okay. I think what was so interesting to me is the equipment.
Yeah. I actually showed this video to the city engineers in the eighties when they were laying the bricks on Broadway. They asked for it.
Is this what they used to make the brick?
No, this is, this is, this is clearing up, say, the subgrade to them, yeah. Look at those wheels.
Watch how they do the concrete.
Do we have some piano music that we could play with this? Is there a villain that's going to pop out?
It's on a pallet that you pull.
This is the lumber.
Looking, looking at him lay that brick.
All right, I think council has also, I don't know, we're just tired watching these, these men work. I think council has this in their email box. Thank you, Ms. Henry, for providing this. At this time, due to the interest of time, we've got a fairly lengthy executive session. City Council now recess to executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We had anticipated a bit lengthier ceremonial session today, but that is, will be in July, that's the reason for the 1:30 start, but at any rate, we will recess to executive session. Council will immediately go to lunch, and then we will reconvene promptly at 1:30 for our regular session. We are in recess. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As terrible of a good afternoon as always. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:31, it is June the 27th, and we are back from executive session. Ms. Patterson Harris, we have you with us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Patterson Harris is with us remotely today. We will first start with our ceremonial items, and this afternoon, I'm honored that we have Pastor Larry Polk with us today. Pastor Polk, if you would come forward. Pastor Polk is with the New Hope Baptist Church, he will be giving our invocation, so if you all please stand, remove your hats. We will move from the prayer, and then we will move immediately into our pledges, which will be led today by Mr. Massengill, as Ms. Patterson Harris is with us remote. It is all yours, Mr. Polk.
Let us pray. God, God, since we know you in a special manner, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be your holy and righteous name, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the giver of every good and perfect gift. Eternal God, we come asking your choice blessings be upon this council. We ask that you would open now the mind of their understanding, help them to receive with meekness and grafted word, which is able to save their very souls. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you will help them to make the right decision- We pray, Heavenly Father, that you will help them to make the right decisions regarding the city of Lubbock. We pray, Eternal God, that you will keep us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Keep us ever looking, our Heavenly Father, unto you, who is the author and finisher of our faith. And God, oh Eternal God, let the words of my mouth, the meditation of our hearts, be acceptable and pleasing in your sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please now join us in the pledges to the United States and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the state, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, we will next move to... Thank you, Kristen. We will next move to our minutes, as we had no citizen comments today. This is minutes from the May 23 regular city council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 5.1, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by like sign? All right, thank you. 5.1 carries 7-0. We will next move to the consent agenda. This is Items 6.1 through 6.24. We have five items that have been pulled. I believe we will go through these individually. I will turn these over to Mr. Atkinson, and with consent of council, we will pull these back into the consent agenda to take one vote. So first, we have Agenda Item 6.3. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item 6.3 might look very familiar to you. It is the designation of the Luprino Project to the State of Texas for Economic Incentives. It is back on your agenda today at the request of the State of Texas. If you would note in your write-up, it says to recognize this as a triple jumbo project, and that such counts as if the city has now used three of its individual designations. In total, the city has nine designations that you may give out over the course of every biennium, so we've used three if you pass this today, and thus you still have six remaining if other projects came forward. Take any questions you might have on that.
Any questions of Mr. Atkinson? All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. We'll now next move to 6.9.
Thank you, Mayor. Might ask you, if you would, to switch the inputs. I've got a background map that we can put up. Item 6.9 is our continuing efforts with our dirt road paving program. We're recommending award of this sequence to Lone Star Dirt and Paving. This is Phase 3 of your certificate of obligation project that was done back in July of 2021, or when the funding was made. Very difficult to see, so I'm going to blow up on some of these individual areas for you. You see Area A and B that are on the screen now. Moving over, we have Area C. You see the two big segments there, with D and E being North Waco and East 49th Street, Ash Avenue. And coming back to G and to H, you see those two as well, East 81st and a piece of Iola. Note that the Iola project is also related to the future construction of the middle school and other things going on over there. To look at it on a map of the whole, as we've come to expect when we do the dirt road program, you will see these in every district save District Number 3. So with that, would take any questions that you may have on it?
Ms. Patterson-Harris, did you have a question or a comment?
I do, both, I believe.
Okay.
I just wanted to... I want to always make sure that we draw attention to these types of projects. There are projects that impact, as Mr. Atkinson stated, every area of this city, and I'd just like to point it out so that we can see the moves that we're making in trying to eliminate, for lack of a better word, any of our dirt roads within this city. I'm not sure, I haven't been keeping count as to how many streets we've actually done prior to, but that would be something, each time we receive these reports, if we would kind of include that, and just always make us aware when we'll get these things completed so we can actually see and prepare ourselves to hear from citizens who actually live in these spaces or around these spaces. I just appreciate the work. It's something that I've always been focused on, because here in 2023, dirt roads should be absent from our speech at any time. It's just my feeling. So, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I know that certain streets have been designated, but there's still some streets that have not been addressed. Will there be additional funds, extra funds? Is that something that can possibly occur?
I think it's... Yes, ma'am, it can possibly occur. We've got a pretty comprehensive list that we're still working our way through, so would suggest if individuals think maybe they're not on that list, or that maybe they just want to know where they are on that list, if they'd reach out to us, we'll be glad to check.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Next, moving to Agenda Item 6.14, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, we'll go back to Item 6.14. Item 6.14 is the award of a contract for rebuilding certain streets with concrete in the north Overton area. So this area is in a TIF, or Tax Increment Financing Zone. The project that's in front of you for this is entirely paid for by that TIF out of their funds to do. So particularly, this is portions of Fifth, Seventh, Ninth, Tenth, between Avenue R and Avenue Q, as well as a short piece of Avenue R. Today, those are asphalt roads with the redevelopment in that area. They have not held up, they're beat to pieces, so this will go back as concrete. And again, TIF funding, council, as you're well aware, has to be spent within the boundary from where it was collected.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any other questions, Mr. Atkinson? All right, next, 6.18, and possibly move to 6.19 on both of those.
Glad to. Item 6.18 has been a bit of time in the making, but we're very glad to present this to you today. Council, you'll recall, you set aside $1.9 million out of the American Rescue Plan Act, or the ARPA, funding specifically for cattail management and dredging in our Canyon Lake system. The item before you gets us going on one of those two, specifically on the cattails. So not a whole lot of folks operate in this area that are experts at managing cattails. We do have one, we've met with them, gone through everything with them, impressed. This contract in the amount of $89,400 with Pond Medics Incorporated will come in, they will do certain low-altitude aerial surveying, they will physically examine the way the streams and the lakes work, and in some cases, don't work. There are certain areas of the Canyon Lake system that we cannot and would not want to work in. They'll identify those for us, and then provide back to us the specific plan by phase with both chemical and mechanical means of being able to come in and do that cattail removal. Of course, we'll get the opinion of probable cost at that point. You do still have funding to do this. I think most important, talking about some of the conversation earlier, take care of what you have. A portion of this contract is for this group to train our city staff on how to maintain and keep the cattails down after we've gone through and been able to clean it out. So glad to bring this one to you, and take any questions, or go to 19.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Mr. Atkinson, once they actually train our staff how to maintain, will this require the purchasing of certain equipment by the city so that staff are able to kind of keep these things at bay?
I do not have a firm answer to that question. I do suspect whether it's... Whether you use chemical means going forward, or mechanical, or both, they're going to have to show that to us and teach us, so we'll know. We've attempted to do it with our own equipment in the past, and it's very temporary when we do it.
That's why I was asking, I know how things turned out for us previously, and I just wanted us to be prepared, if it's going to call for us to get some particular equipment, or, as you stated, chemicals, or whatever. I'm sorry, I'm supposed to be on screen, huh? Sorry. Hold on, let me sit. My bad, sorry. I just want us to be prepared for whatever we need to obtain for our staff so that they can maintain these areas. That's one of the things that I get asked about most frequently, especially during this time of the year, is where they're going to do the cattails, what's going on with the cattails? And so if we're going to empower our staff, we definitely want to make sure they have everything that they need so that they can maintain these things, and so that citizens can use our lakes. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, I think we're staying on with the Parks and Rec theme here. Mr. Atkinson, 6.19?
Thank you. Item 6.19 is the request for a contract with Turf Raider Lawn and Landscape. This is a group of seven of our city parks, being Jennings, Mahon, DePree, Higginbotham, Long, Guy, and Stevens. And a little background on this, this is actually your number two bidder. This contract was previously awarded to the low bidder. Due to lack of performance, that contract was terminated, so we now come back to you with your number two and ask you to approve this. We have seen this organization work in some other areas, and they are doing good work. But as you know from phones and emails, we're behind with the parks, and having to do this has gotten us a little bit farther behind. As a side note, would also note to you, we've had the same problem with contractors at our cemetery, and we had a contractor actually abandon the contract and leave it. We had the number two in that case turn down that contract, so that one is also going to go to the number three contractor, which is same thing, Turf Raider Lawn and Landscape. Take any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
If you didn't notice, these are items that I pulled, and I pulled them primarily because of the issues that we have been having of late, and I just wanted to make sure with the individuals that we're looking at contracting with, that we won't have, we don't foresee any of the issues as we did a few weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am, we're attempting to do that. If I'm not mistaken, this is the second year in a row we've had to take people off of contracts and come back for the next.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was just concerned, I know recently you mentioned the cemetery, and that really set things ablaze, but I mean, just having the citizens understand that sometimes, you know, folks don't always complete the things that they started, but I'm hoping that with this, this organization, that won't be an issue, and you sound pretty confident in that.
Yes, ma'am, and we will definitely stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Mr. Atkinson, do we have a backup in case we have issues with this contractor as well? It's... I think it's overwhelming for anybody that's taking on parks, and even the cemetery at this point.
We do, and there's two ways. You keep going down the list of your bid contracts and get somebody to take that. We do have some capability to do this in-house, and we have increased it over the years. We do not have near enough capability to do all of it. So between losing the original group for these seven, plus what happened at the cemetery, your parks people have worked mightily, but to the point that we're destroying some of our own equipment trying to do too much with it. It's all getting fixed, we'll put it back in circulation, but it gets tough, and unfortunately, those years that we have, the really nice spring rains, we fight this more and more.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other questions of Mr. Atkinson on 6.19? All right. I've got 6.1 through 6.24. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items 6.1 through 6.24? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, 6.1 through 6.24? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, consent agenda carries 7-0. All right, we're going to move to Agenda Item 7. Well, let me take this up first, council. 7.8 and 7.9 will be moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There were some other issues, I think paperwork-wise, so we will move 7.8 and 7.9, so that will be taken off of today. So now, we will move to 7.14. This is the Consider the Ordinance for Request of Annexation for Red Canyon Development and 14 Texas Real Estate LLC to annex 2.986 acres. Who's got this one, Mr. Atkinson? All right, there's Kristen. All right, Kristen, we're going out of order, in the interest of the time here, so we'll go ahead and turn 7.14 over to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 7.14 is the second reading of the annexation request of 2.986 acres located west of Quaker Avenue, north of Woodrow Road. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on the second read on 7.14, Kristen? Seeing none? Is there a motion to approve 7.14? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of 7.14? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 7.14 carries 7-0. All right, council, next, we will move to the resolution of a right-of-way. We have a special motion on this particular agenda item. It's been prepared. Mr. McBrayer, because of his bright legal appellate mind, will be reading this, and there's a lot of here-ins and where-to fours, so I would ask for a motion on 7.15, Mr. McBrayer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the City of Lubbock, Texas authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire easements and be simple in four parcels of real property for the purpose of laying out, opening, constructing, reconstructing, maintaining, widening, extending, and operating Erskine Street in Lubbock County, Texas. Said parcels being described as follows. First parcel, a 0.2227 acre parcel located in Section 8, Block JS, Lubbock County, Texas, being a portion of that certain 7.6 acre tract described under County Clerk File Number 20045341, Official Public Records of Lubbock County, Texas, and being further described by Meats and Bounds in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein. Track 2, a 0.3333 acre parcel located in Section 8, Block JS, Lubbock County, Texas, being a portion of that certain 6.2 acre tract described under County Clerk's File Number 2021052641, Official Public Records of Lubbock County, Texas, and being further described by Meats and Bounds in Exhibit B attached hereto and incorporated herein. Parcel 3, a 0.0753 acre parcel located in Section 3, Block JS, Lubbock County, Texas, being a portion of the northeast one-quarter of said Section 3, Block JS, as described in Volume 6638, Page 9, Official Real Property Records of Lubbock County, Texas, and being further described by Meats and Bounds in Exhibit C attached hereto and incorporated herein. Parcel 4, a 2.803 acre parcel located in Section 3, Block JS, Lubbock County, Texas, being a portion of the northeast one-quarter of said Section 3, Block JS, as described in Volume 6638, Page 9, Official Real Property Records of Lubbock County, Texas, and being further described by Meats and Bounds in Exhibit D attached hereto and incorporated herein.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Joy? All right, is there any discussion on 7.15? Any questions of staff? Any questions? Any questions of Mr. Atkinson? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approval of agenda item 7.15 and Mr. McBrayer's motion? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, 7.15 carries 7-0. All right. We will take a five-minute recess, or let's see, a six-minute recess, and we will be back in session at 2:00 p.m. We are in recess. All right, we're going back in. We'll call this session back into order. We're back from a brief recess. We are moving to the regular agenda. This is items 7.1 through 7.7. These are public hearings. I'm going to move, counsel, you have all of these in your backup and you have these in your agenda packet. So if there's no objection, we'll take some comments on 7.1 through 7.7 from Ms. Sager and then we will probably open this up as one public hearing, if that works for everyone. All right, Ms. Sager?
Good afternoon again. Item 7.1 is Zone Case 3483. The request is for a zone change from General Retail District C3 to Commercial District C4. We sent out 25 notifications, receiving three in opposition. Two of the three had concerns that this area was mostly already C3 zoning and bringing in C4 could potentially be detrimental. This property is located south of Clovis Road, east of Avenue U. This is the notification map showing the three responses in the area. The current aerial map of the subject property, you can see there are commercial uses up and down Clovis Road with additional residential to the south and west. The current zoning is a patchwork of zoning of C3, C4, and M1 all along Clovis Road with additional residential to the south and west. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. There is an existing commercial building on the property, which you can see in that photo here. The building was constructed in 1950 under the 1941 code, which allowed automobile sales and repair uses. That use became non-conforming with the 1955 code, which changed the code to allow that use in C4. So this building has been non-conforming since then, but has sat vacant for more than a year, so has lost that non-conforming use. The applicant wants to come back and reestablish an auto shop. Here is a site plan provided by the applicant, floor plan, and some renderings of their proposed renovations. Future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The request for C4 zoning is consistent. It's in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed rezoning location is along Clovis Road, which is a principal arterial, and Avenue T, which is a local street. Staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Mr. McBrayer?
I don't have, I don't want to let up.
All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I have a question. Is Mr. Medina here today?
I have not spoken with him, but we do inform all our applicants they need to be at the council meeting.
That's my only question I wanted. Make sure he was going to speak.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager, this is a, an auto shop?
Mm-hmm.
Will they be allowed to have vehicles stored outside the shop?
Only vehicles they are working on, and I believe they'll have to be behind a screening fence.
Okay, because we have some of those and they've got 20 vehicles sitting outside, which is not very pretty to the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And this property joins a multifamily.
Yes.
Designation, so they will have to be behind a screening fence?
Yes.
Only vehicles that they are working on?
Yes.
And how do we enforce that?
It'll be through code enforcement.
Somebody would have to complain.
Someone would have to complain.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager? All right, thank you, Sager. Let's go ahead and move to 7.2.
Item 7.2 is Zone Case 3485, request of the City of Lubbock for a specific use, for a public use, for a cemetery on property zone transition. We sent out nine notifications, receiving no responses. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, located south of East 50th, east of the loop. Is currently vacant, surrounded by vacant land. Current zoning is transition. And here are some photos of the subject site and surrounding area. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. This property is located on a primary arterial street. The specific use is compatible with the surrounding area and again, located on a principal arterial. Staff did not make a recommendation, since this is a request of City of Lubbock, but the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. This is for the proposed VA cemetery and they do have a representative here if you have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. Any questions on 7.2? Let's move on to 7.3.
Item 7.3 is Zone Case 501-A. The request is for a specific use for an event center on property zone local retail district C2. We sent out 25 notifications, receiving no response. Property is located north of 34th, east of Quaker. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. You have commercial businesses up and down 34th with residential to the north. Current zoning is C2. There is additional C2, C3, and C4 along 34th Street with R1 zoning to the north. Here's a view of the subject property and surrounding area. There is an existing business on this property that is currently open and operating. The tenant would just like to expand and have the option of also allowing events in this building. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located adjacent to compatible land uses along a major thoroughfare. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and the location is along 34th Street, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Any questions of Ms. Sager on 7.3? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
What is the capacity of that building?
I will let the applicant answer that.
Would the fire department or fire marshals that are present be able to answer what the limited number of people that could fit into that facility? You know, sorry about that, but... Thanks, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Ma'am, we'll have to research that and get back to you, but we would be able to determine. Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions on 7.3? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager, when I read this, it says that it's, actually, Dr. Lee, that was Lee, who's the applicant, and then in the description, it talks about the fact that he's not sure if he wants it or not.
So the owner of the property is different from the tenant. The owner did sign off on the application, allowing the request to be made. The owner was at the Planning and Zoning Commission and had a long discussion with the commission about his potential concerns, but ultimately said he has faith in his tenant and he's going to allow him to proceed with the request.
So he kind of is on both sides?
Yes.
Good.
All right, any other questions on 7.3? All right, let's move on to 7.4.
Item 7.4 is Zone Case 1190-C. The request is also for a specific use for an event center on property zone local retail district C2. We sent out 20 notifications, receiving one in opposition. The one in opposition had concerns about noise and potential disturbances since the property is adjacent to residential. This property is located north of 50th, east of Quaker Avenue. Here's the notification map showing the one response in opposition. The aerial view of the subject property, again, you have businesses up and down 50th with residential to the north. Current zoning is a mix of C2, C2A, and C3 along 50th with R1 single-family to the north. Here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. This property did start operating without a permit as an event center in September of last year. They were shut down in April of this year and then started the process to get into compliance through this request. The zone cases, or the proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The proposed specific use is compatible with the surrounding area, would not change the character of the existing development. The location of the property is along 50th, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request and the commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Any questions on 7.4?
Once again?
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I just want to know the capacity, because event center to me, that's, sounds like a big crowd, and then if it's BYOB, that could get a little bit dangerous. I just want to inquire about that.
Here's, I spoke with the...
Just, we're going to have a public hearing on this here briefly, so you can answer those questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Yes, it just demonstrates that when you purchase a property or you lease a property, you need to know what zoning designation it has. We are having a series of these where people have purchased property thinking they could put in one business or one development and they can't legally. And we're continuing to see this. So, realtors and people out there that deal in this on a regular basis, you need to know what the zone is that you are allowed on that property. So, just another message from counsel would certainly simplify planning's life as well as everyone else.
All right, any other questions or comments on 7.4? Again, we will have a public hearing shortly. We have plenty of time for questions. 7.5?
Item 7.5 is Zone Case 1067F. The request is to rezone property from local retail district C2 to general retail district C3. We sent out 13 notifications, receiving no response. This property is located east of Indiana Avenue, south of 66th Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are adjacent commercial uses to the north, south, northwest, and east with a church immediately to the west. Current zoning is a mix of C2, C2A, one small piece of C4, and two family and one family residential. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. There is an existing commercial business or building that is currently vacant on the site. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The proposed C3 would be in conformance with the future land use plan. It is also in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. 66th Street is designated as a collector and Indiana Avenue is a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request and the commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Sager on 7.5? All right, 7.6?
Item 7.6 is Zone Case 3484. The request is to rezone property from transition to Interstate Highway Commercial, IHC. We sent out seven notifications, receiving no response. This property is located north of 130th, the future LEAP 88, east of Eplund Avenue. Here's an aerial of the subject property that is currently vacant, surrounded by vacant land. Current zoning is transition. There is existing Interstate Highway Commercial immediately south on the other side of the future LEAP 88. Future land use plan designates this area for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here is a survey provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density, so while IHC would not be in conformance with this designation, it is appropriate in this location along the future freeway. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Eplund Avenue and 130th, future LEAP 88 are designated as a principal arterial and a freeway. Staff recommends approval and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. McBrayer?
So from that, can you go back to the map or the overhead?
Mm-hmm.
So, how much, will that be right up against the highway right-of-way when it's completed?
Yes.
Okay, so there's not going to be a gap then?
No. That gap is future right-of-way for LEAP 88. Mm-hmm.
All right, Ms. Sager, 7.7?
Item 7.7 is Zone Case 2538-A-A. The request is to rezone property from general retail C3 and two-family R2 to local retail C2 with a specific use for a self-storage facility. We sent out 25 notifications, receiving none in response. This property is located north of 19th, east of Eplund Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is a developing neighborhood to the east, apartments to the south, and a mixture of vacant land, residential and commercial, to the west and north. Current zoning is C3 and R2. You have R1 to the east, A2, R2, and C3 to the south, C3 and R2 to the west and northwest. Future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's the site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates the subject property for residential low-density uses. While the request is not in conformance with the designation, it is appropriate in its location adjacent to a thoroughfare and other existing commercial zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate with the compatible uses. The property is located east of Eplund, north of 19th, which are both principal arterials. Staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote with one recusal. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, any questions on 7.7 for Ms. Sager at this time? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Sager. Probably stay close. Counsel, sensing that there may be some more questions, what I will probably propose doing is bringing these items just into public hearings and we'll take individual votes, even though we have the information. And we also have Ms. Sager very close, and if we have questions or further questions from her. All right, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for agenda item 7.1. Purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the applicant and the members of the public. The counsel may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion will be had by counsel during the public hearing. So, the public hearing is now open to 7.1. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? So for those of you that have participated before, if you're in opposition, you may step forward, speak your opposition, and then you will close to opposition and then we will open to those wishing to speak in favor of. Then we will close the public hearing as to each individual item and then we will take a vote at that time. So, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.1, you may approach now. All right, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of item 7.1, you may approach at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.1. Is there a motion to approve agenda item 7.1?
No.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, is there any discussion on agenda item 7.1? Ms. Joy?
There were some questions that we wanted answers to, but he's not here to answer them, so I guess we'll just have to vote on what we have before us.
All right, all in favor of approval of agenda item 7.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 5-2. All right. This time I will open the public hearing as to agenda item 7.2. Any of those wishing to speak in opposition to 7.2, you may approach at this time. Any of those wishing to speak in opposition to 7.2, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of agenda item 7.2, you may approach at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.2. Is there a motion to approve agenda item 7.2?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. And I have a second from Mr. McBrayer. Any further discussion on 7.2? All right, all in favor of approval of 7.2, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, by like sign? All right, 7.2 carries 7 to 0. All right, I will now open the public hearing as to agenda item 7.3. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.3, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.3, you may approach at this time. And when you step forward, if you'll just please state your name and then your address.
Okay.
And you may make your statement.
Yeah, Steve Vernon. My current business is at 3807 34th Street. 412 34th is my other shop. I've got car wrapping and I was using the front part of it as a venue and it's like over 100, but wasn't going to allow any, like over 50 people at the most in there. And it was for my customers to use. And the reason I ask this is one of them had asked about if they could rent it because I have a pool table, shuffleboard, and dartboard in there. And I told him, yeah, because he was going to have to go to Jake's for his 13-year-old boy to play pool. And I thought, well, maybe I could just let him rent this place instead. And I have a sign that says, "Family Venue," I'll have on there. It says, "No guns, no smoking, no sale of alcohol or anything like that." I've got a window with a one-way mirror in there and there will be either security or me there if it is rented out. And we do our wrapping and stuff in the back. And so it'll only be used from 5:00 to 10:00 in the afternoon.
And that's it? You'd like to add, Mr. Vernon?
No, sir. That was all.
Any questions of Mr. Vernon from council? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of 7.3?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Vernon before he grabs his seat.
Okay. He's on his way back up, Ms. Patterson Harris.
Yes, sir.
And he's at the microphone now.
Mr. Vernon, you indicated that the location, the event center portion of that building would only be used by your customers.
Yes.
How do you, what would you be doing to ensure that it's only customers?
Because...
And, uh, you have... Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What would you do to ensure that it's only customers using your location?
Because they'll have to come to Vernon Signature Audio, which I own for 43 years there on 34th Street. And so if they're not a customer of mine on my list, they will not be allowed to go in there at all.
And you indicated that it would be just family gatherings?
Yes. I've got a sign that says, "Family Gathering." It has no smoking, no guns, no vaping, family-oriented. I have a sign put out front. No loitering around. And we use it, it holds 24 cars. So my parking spot only holds 10. So we take our cars down there when we're done and then I take the customers down there and pick them up because we just don't have the space there in that building I've been for so long. I'm next door to People's Bank. And like I said, I've been there 43 years, so...
Yes, sir. You said no sale of alcohol will individuals need to bring alcohol?
No, no. If they're going to come in and if they want to have some drinks or whatever, then I'm probably going to have a contract drawn up that will allow two drinks in four hours. It will have to be put locked up in a room that I have and it either be me or the guy, the security person I have there will be there to ensure that. And no food will be sold out of there, no alcohol is going to be sold out of there or anything like that. But if it's a quinceaneta or if it's a birthday party or something like that, the guy that I rented it from said he didn't mind if they had one or two drinks in there, but I've got 18 cameras set up. I can see everything when it comes on, on my phone. I monitor it 24 hours a day and so I will be on top of it 100%. And like I said, I'm not going to let anything damage my reputation here in Lubbock after the 43 years I've been here, you know?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
I want to, I just wanted a family event to where you could take your kids. I've got Uno, comic books, I've got a playroom in there, somewhere you could go that would be not a bar, let's say. Something, just, I've got some TV set up in there for the games, they could play games on and stuff like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Um, most...
Mr. Vernon, you might stick close.
Yep, I have a couple of questions for you. When was the last time you went to a quinceaneta?
Actually, I did it, uh, in, um...
So you're already doing this?
No, not in here. I did it at my shop. I have a limousine and so I let some people get in my car and have a little drive around, a little quinceaneta. All my guys are Spanish and I'm the only white guy in my shop, you know? So at my shop, we'll have a little get-together, a family event, mostly at my house. And I live in Kemper Estates out on 150th with Big Nest Pool and stuff, so I let them come out there and just have a fun event. It's all family-oriented.
So, I've been to our family events and it can get a little crazy, but are you going to be providing security since most...
If, if it's going to be a large event, oh yeah, I will.
You can only fit 50 people, so...
No, I think it's 140 is what it'll take, but I'm not going to allow more than 50 people in there at a time.
But will you provide security?
Yes, I will.
No matter what?
No matter what, because I'm not going to get in trouble for nobody. You know, my dad was captain of the courthouse for 32 years and, and I know what just this much can destroy you, you know? And I'm not going to let anybody hurt my reputation. All right, yes, ma'am. And you might want to call me on the next one.
Ms. Joy, Mr. Vernon, I don't want you to walk back over there yet. Hold on.
Okay.
Ms. Joy?
Al Vernon.
Al.
Yeah, that was my, you know him?
I do.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm his son, Steve, so, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Vernon, before I finally let him have a seat? All right. Thank you, Mr. Vernon.
All right, thank you. Have a blessed day.
We take a motion? All right, thanks. Intertain a motion to approve 7.3. Thank you, Mr. Brayer. Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Any further discussion on 7.3? Ms. Joy.
I have a question. It's really from Ms. Sager, now that I know a little bit about this. Is this really an event center? He's talking about storing vehicles?
No.
No?
No. I have a wrapping machine that makes vinyl wraps for cars.
I know, but he said something about he had too many cars in one place and so he would move some of them down?
Right. So he has two business locations and I'm not sure how he moves the vehicles around for those business locations, but with him wanting to have the ability to rent the facility for parties and events, that's why we're requiring the specific use.
Would he be allowed to have vehicles stored there is my question under what he's asking for.
So, the vehicle wrapping itself, that should not be an issue in C2 because of the sign shop, which I believe is allowed in C2. Storing of the vehicles, that's something we need to look into.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager?
Can I say something? No, no vehicles are stored down there. I cut them and bring them to my shop on 34th Street and 3807 34th and do it inside there. Because there's no garage doors down there. So no vehicles are stored down there.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Joy?
No. Can I ask a question? Is it open for questions?
We've taken a, we've taken a motion and a second, thank you. Is there, are there further questions? Do you still have questions about, I mean, I'm contemplating, do we need to move this one? Because Ms. Joy has questions and there's some questions for Chief Foberson regarding...
It seems a little bit confusing as well.
Counsel opposed. If, if we move this to the next one, would we, the public hearing's been held.
Correct.
We could postpone this to gather more information. Counsel knows of that? Any objection to that? Ms. Patterson Harris?
I'm good.
All right. Do we need a motion to move that? All right, entertain a motion to postpone this to the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of postponing agenda item 7.3 to our next regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, we will move 7.3, Mr. Vernon, and have some questions that we will get from staff and maybe some further questions of you. Okay? Thank you very much. All right, now move to agenda item 7.4. I will now open the public hearing for 7.4. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.4, you may approach now. All right, seeing none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of 7.4? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.4. Is there a motion to approve 7.4? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, further discussion on 7.4? Questions for Ms. Sager? No one spoke up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Patterson Harris?
I'm trying to look to see if, um, it's a use for an event center. I'd be welcome. Remind me of not having everything just right here in front of me, I'm trying to find, so that's on 50th and Quaker is actually to the, uh, south or north of 50th?
Ms. Sager, would you mind pulling 7.4 up for the map from Ms. Patterson Harris?
It's on the north side of 50th.
North side of 50th, okay. Can you pull it up for me, please? Okay, and the person in opposition is to the left or to the west of that location? Oh, right back behind it, okay.
Behind the alley, mhm.
Okay. Understand their concern.
Any other questions you have, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Yeah, uh, I have that over there. And how, how large a facility is this? Is this the one that was, um, the white building that has the arches over the front of the building? Looks more like a house. Am I correct?
It was, I don't know what the form of business was.
This one, this one. I was thinking of the other.
Country Framer, yeah.
Okay. I, it looked, I got it confused with the other one. That's why we wanted to see what it looked like. And for what they've requested, there's enough parking spaces and all?
Yes, the applicant submitted a plan showing meeting the requirement, but we'll verify it through the permitting process as well.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Patterson Harris? I'm sorry, I've got to get the feedback. Yeah, and I'm going to get to Ms. Joy and then I'll come back to you if you want to gather thoughts and ask questions.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Joy?
I'm wondering if Chief Foberson is sitting up here close because he's been asked a question about capacity of these event centers and that's a determination by the fire department as I understand it, or somebody approves a limit. So would you help us?
The fire department in conjunction with building services. It's based on the potential occupant load, not just what the occupant wants to have in there. It's dependent on things like finishings with, with inside the occupancy, fixed furnishings, different things like that, the type of activities, whether alcohol will be sold or provided or allowed, different things like that. But there are also other things to consider. Just because the zone change happens does not mean that the occupancy will be suitable for whatever they want to do. There may be additional requirements once it becomes an assembly regarding sprinkler systems, some things that are very expensive.
So you can't really tell us right now what it will be until they get in and you all have an opportunity to inspect?
We would visit with them and see what they have planned and once we inspected, taken measurements, things like that, done calculations that are very specific, then we would be able to issue a CO, certificate of occupancy, in conjunction with building services.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? Ms. Patterson Harris?
Yeah, I had a, a citizen send some information to me for what's going on in a lot of cities, specifically Houston, the city of Houston, where they're really keen in their passing ordinance to make it really difficult for, um, after-hour spots and things of that because of all the issues that have come about as a result of after-hour locations being around. And I'm just, you know, I have that, you know, same concern sometimes and really can't, can't tell what this would actually be used for. A lot of things can hide behind an event center. So, and that individual, the individual that's requesting the change is not in the building?
All right, Ms. Patterson Harris, I guess they, there was, there was, no, didn't approach on the public hearing. I'm not going to reopen the public hearing before you make a statement. Do you have a question?
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Property owner? And please, go ahead and state your name.
It's Todd Kaufman.
Todd, and what's your address?
3417 23rd Street.
All right. Ms. Patterson Harris, Mr. Kaufman is here for your questions and cross-examination.
Yes, sir. Just kind of wanted an idea as to what, when you ask it, requesting an event center, what is it you, that you're actually requesting it for? When you say, you know, when I say I want to have a birthday party, I kind of have an idea what that's going to be. So when you're requesting a specific use for an event center, what's your plans? What do you see happening at this location?
You are correct on birthday parties. We've had several birthday parties. Like I said, I opened before I knew the zoning, so we've had probably 15, 20 birthday parties everywhere from a three-year-old to a 60-year-old. We've had some fundraising events for local families that had a sick child, so we raised some money for them. Primarily, that's what we've done since we've opened. We do have barn dances for senior citizens.
Okay. How long, what's the square footage on that facility?
It's in the main building, it's 1,500 square feet. I think it's 2,000 altogether, but...
Okay.
With the back room. And I've spoke to Brody, he's with the Lubbock Fire Marshal. He said that it would be 99 occupancy. He's actually came in, talked to me and walked through the building.
And you said that you guys were having these type of events prior to knowing that you're required to have a change in the, of the zone?
That is correct. And I guess it was just ignorance on my part.
Speak up a little. Mr. Kaufman, go ahead and speak into that mic a little more.
Okay. It was ignorance on my part. I did not realize that.
So did someone tell you?
I knew I had a commercial zoning, but I didn't know that it was required to have an event center zoning.
Okay. Okay. So did someone share that with you? Did you get cited or what happened?
Uh, yes, it was on Easter and I don't know if somebody complained or whatever, but Mr. Brody with the Lubbock Fire Department, he came out and said that we needed to close down. It was a legal gathering.
Okay. All righty. All right, thank you. Thank you. So, well, you were, um, when someone made the complaint, do you have any idea what they were complaining about?
I really don't because there was maybe six people there and it was, there was a hailstorm on Easter, so I don't know what the complaint was.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. You might stick close, Mr. Kaufman, you may have more questions. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Kaufman, what hours are you planning on renting the building out for?
Normally, we'll rent for the, the full day, so I give the person the keys and the Normally, we'll rent for the full day, so I give the person the keys in the morning so they can decorate and do whatever. We're pretty much a blank state, a blank slate. They'll put up balloons, you know, decorations, whatever they want to do. And then it's usually over by 11:00 or 12:00 each day.
Ms. Sager, are there regulations on hours on event centers where they have to be? Or can they just have people as they?
Excuse me.
Sorry, it's kind of a joint part question.
No, our code does not regulate the hours.
Any other questions, Ms. Sager, Mr. Kaufman? All right, thank you very much. All right, I have a motion and a second on 7.4. All in favor of approval of 7.4, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. You're off the hook, Mr. Kaufman. Breathe easy back there. All right, 7.5. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing on 7.5. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.5, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.5, you may approach at this time. That might include any applicants or building owners or anyone. All right. I will now close the public hearing as to 7.5. Is there a motion to approve 7.5? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Or is there further discussion or questions of Ms. Sager or staff on 7.5? All right, Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager, I've read your report. Does it accurately reflect what they've been telling you they might or might not do? They might tear it down, they might not tear it down. They think it'd be an oil change, but they're not sure. Is that right?
The intent is for an oil change facility. Whether they can rehab this building to make it an oil change facility is yet to be seen, or if they'll have to demolish and construct new.
But they're asking for a change to C3.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager? All right, I have a motion and a second on 7.5. All in favor of approval of 7.5, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries 6-1. All right, we will now move to 7.6. I will now open the public hearing on 7.6. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 7.6, you may approach at this time. All right, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.6, you may approach at this time. As a reminder, if you'll just please state your name and your address.
My name is David Marino with R2 Engineering, 5012 50th Street. I'm here to answer any questions Counsel may have.
Thank you, Dave. You might stick close, there may be some questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.6? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.6. Is there a motion to approve 7.6? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Or any questions of Ms. Sager on 7.6 or further discussion? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve 7.6? You already have a motion. Already have a motion. You're off the hook now, too.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of approval of 7.6, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.6 carries 7-0 on the second time. All right, we will now move to 7.7. And I will now open the public hearing as to 7.7. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.7, you may approach at this time.
My name is Charlotte Dunham and I live in District, Council District 6. I also, I live at 1102 Primrose Avenue, which is just adjacent to this area where the proposal for the storage facility is. I don't think the presentation to you quite gave a true sense of what that area is like, because it is, has been a cotton field forever. The owners are deceased and it's under development and it's developing very quickly. And it's developing into single-family homes. And the character of the area is changing and I think a storage unit might not fit into the nature of that kind of neighborhood. The, there's a, I want to call them junior high, I'm that age, right? There's, is it, what is it? Terra Vista is just north of that area. I really would love to see this preserved as single-family zoning and not turned into something commercial. So thank you for your, for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition to 7.7? All right. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of 7.7, you may approach at this time.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Will Stevens. I'm with AMD Engineering at 6515 68th Street, representing 806 Lane Group. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Will. Anyone here, else here wishing to speak in favor of 7.7, you may approach at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.7 and entertain a motion to approve 7.7. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. Wilson, a second by Mr. Massengill. All right, further questions of Mr. Stevens? Further questions of Ms. Sager? Is any further discussion on 7.7? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Yeah, I think that is a valid concern about preserving the area. Is it going to be the typical brick and metal fence storage or?
It will be a typical brick fence along the outer portions of the facility. The only access will be to 19th Street and we'll have an emergency access gate. I believe that's 18th Street behind us. And so it'll be a, you know, it's a large eight-foot masonry fence around the outskirts of it. Yeah, no metal fence, so.
Ms. Joy?
As I understand, Burgomy Park has been developed by Jordan Wheatley.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is part of his ownership of that property. I don't know if Ms. Dunham, there you are, knows all of that history or not. And in looking at the map where it shows me what the zoning districts are, it's got multifamily to the north.
Across the street, yes, ma'am.
And general retail. General retail to the west.
Yes, ma'am. Should be C3 to the west, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and then residential or multifamily to the south, yeah.
But you still have some single-family that fronts on 19th Street.
Correct.
That's not developed.
Correct.
As yet.
Right, yeah.
So this would not encroach on any of that single-family.
No, ma'am.
Designation.
No, ma'am.
And would already exist next to commercial and.
Right, yeah, so on the site plan, like I mentioned before, the only means of access would be up 19th. And then we'd have that required second access, that emergency access on the, on the north.
We don't have, I don't think we have a photo, do we? Let's see. There we do.
Should.
Do you think Ms. Dunham has seen this?
I don't know. And I brought, I brought a printout, I can get to you. So kind of a rendering, what it's going to look like. So brick on the outer wall right here, so residential's right here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I have a printout, I can get to you.
Okay.
So, yes, ma'am.
Does that, Ms. Dunham, does that help?
It helps, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Make sure that super wall do the same thing what you have.
Right. Yeah, it does. I think it does. Yeah, he cares about, you know, the appearance of these, so. Yeah. It does, completely agree.
All right, any other questions of Will?
I do, I have one.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, sir. Will, you know, we've seen you quite a bit before the council.
Yes, ma'am.
And usually there's the same concern when you show up.
Right.
So I'll ask, like I probably asked you a previous time, was there any efforts made to reach out to the citizens who are directly, who will be directly or even indirectly impacted by such a building? Has there been any contact or efforts made to reach out to them to share with them what you're looking at doing? Or maybe hear from them to see maybe there's some different things that you guys may be able to compromise on?
So to answer your question, there wasn't any effort to reach out. The residential development that's occurring, the Burgomy Park that Mr. Will mentioned, is still, you know, under development. So, you know, no effort was made to reach out to them. And then directly adjacent to us, East and West, hasn't been developed and the apartment complex across the street. So, you know, to answer your question, no, there wasn't any effort made to reach out. But I do think that Mr. Posters made an effort to make the outer appearance of his facility more appealing with the brick wall and try and make it a, you know, I think this is a great buffer between C3 and residential along a, along a street like 19th, so.
So you didn't make, no efforts were made to reach out to these good people? The ones that are living there are that you are aware of the fact that they reside in that area nearby?
Right. That's correct.
It's just, it's just a good practice, because, you know, I know that your client wants to be a good neighbor.
Right.
To these citizens, but if we don't have that conversation to see what needs to be done to make you a good neighbor, then you can just probably say that you're not being a good neighbor, because you're not even required.
Right.
I just get concerned, especially anytime I see a citizen who is, who is in opposition of what's taking place. And they just didn't do that just because they woke that morning and decided they were going to go against something. And they've actually had an opportunity to see what you're looking at doing or not see and decide that that's not something they want near them. I just encourage you to do that. If you didn't, if you didn't catch the hit the number of times you've been before.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll drop it again, because that's important. That's important. Citizens are concerned about, you know, their taxes and all that type of stuff, but they're also concerned by what's going to be near their home. And even though all of that location has not been completely developed, I guarantee there are some folks coming in the pipeline that will have it as their home. So I just, I ask you, you know, you do what you want to, you're a grown man, but I mean, take that into consideration and be mindful that these things, even though you don't live around there, it won't impact you, it's going to impact somebody.
Yes, ma'am. I know I usually, whenever I'd get letters of opposition, that's when I really get, you know, interacting with the adjacent residents. I need, we need to be more proactive, I think. So I definitely agree with that.
Yes, sir. Please do. I feel make us all a little bit better.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Any other questions of Mr. Stevens? All right, I have a motion and a second on 7.7. All in favor of approval of 7.7, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign?
Nay.
All right, motion carries 6-1. All right, as previously mentioned, 7-8 and 7-9 have been removed. We will now move to 7-10, 7-11. The first will be a public hearing on 7-10 and then 7-11 will be the actual vote on the resolution. And the same with 7-12, we will have a public hearing on 7-12 and then an actual vote for the ordinance on 7-13. All right, so at this time, I'm calling 7.10 and opening it up to Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Counsel. Nice to be with you this afternoon. 7-10 and 7-11, as the Mayor mentioned, will be a public hearing and then consideration of what's called a resolution of no objection. So you really aren't so much approving an application today to the TDHCA as much as you are just not opposing an application to the TDHCA. If Counsel will recall, earlier this year, we considered several applications for the 9% low-income housing tax credit program. That program is a competitive program for those 9% low-income housing tax credits. This one today is going to be the first 4% application that you've considered this year, and this is a non-competitive program. And so again, that's the reason that you are simply approving or considering a resolution of no obligation. We can send as many of these forward as you would like to, and the applicants are not competing with each other. So you've seen this information before about the low-income housing tax credit program. The key difference here is that with the 4% housing tax credit program, they are coupled with a multifamily bond program that here locally is executed by the Lubbock Housing Authority. You actually approved or allowed the issuance of the housing authority to issue these bonds earlier today in the consent agenda. And so this is just the follow-up to that bond issuance by the housing authority. Just as a note, the items that we pulled off the agenda today will be very similar to what we're doing today. We had some errors in our resolution, so I'm going to get that corrected for you and brought back. But this is the same program as the ones that came off today. This particular project is for the Ella Apartments. These were formerly known as Cricket Court, if that jogs anybody's memory. They are located at 1102 58th Street. The budget for this project is $12.3 million. They are proposing an average of about $81,000 per unit in restorations to this property. There are 152 units at this apartment complex and 126 of those will be allocated to low income. So that kind of hits the highlights. You do have a public hearing. We do have a representative from the Lubbock Housing Authority with us today. Should you have any questions specifically for them? But outside of that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Appreciate it. You might stay close?
Yes, sir.
All right. Texas Local Government Code requires that a public hearing be conducted by the city in regard to the proposed 4% non-competitive housing tax credit. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Does anyone wish to speak to Counsel in regard to the proposed matter? You may approach now. All right, seeing none. Well, now, oh, we got one. Go ahead and step forward. Please state your name and if you'll give your address.
Hello, Counsel. My name is Antonio Lopez. I stay at 5415 Jarvis, the Demora Villages, formerly known as the Linwood. It's funny, I actually just got back from the Ella Apartments today to survey the situation and I do think that there is change needed. There's several tenants who have been without an air conditioner for about seven months now, having to buy units out of the windows, out of their own pocket for window units. And there's even a whole section of the apartments that are just completely abandoned. No tenants, no nothing. And so my main question and my main concern is what's the timeline looking like on this current project if it were to be approved?
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Agenda Item 7.10? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.10.
I'm sorry, Mayor, was that in favor of? I'd be glad to speak in favor of, if that's what we're doing.
Just generally open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. My name is Sherri Flynn and I'm the Executive Director of the Lubbock Housing Finance Corporation. And it will actually be the finance corporation that is issuing the tax-exempt bonds. We expect to close by September at the latest. So you all have already approved the issuance of the bonds. The tax credits go hand-in-hand to provide equity to allow even more improvements to be made. I can't speak to the condition of the property at this point in terms of air conditioning and so forth that this gentleman has brought up, but I can tell you that the developer will be spending over $80,000 per unit on average to make major improvements to the property. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak while I have the public hearing open? You may approach. Again, if you'll please just state your name and your address.
Matthew Cavassos, living at 3407 Juneau Avenue. Yeah, I would like to speak in support of this proposition if it does improve the conditions of the Ella Apartments. Sounds like. Sounds like, from what I've heard, that it would. So, yeah, I would just like to concur with the, with the last two.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Emily Hobson. I live at 9701 Weatherford Avenue. I would just also like to speak. I know of many people at the Ella who are out of air conditioning right now. As a child, I hang, hung out a lot whenever it was known as the Cricket Court. And they were in poor condition then, so the condition of them now is even worse. Like they were stating, there's parts of the apartments that people just cannot live in anymore. So, yeah, I would like for this to be approved.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else? All right, I'll now close the public hearing as to 7-10. And again, there's no action on 7-10. Counsel, if I take a motion to approve the resolution under 7.11? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. McPrayer. All right, I've got questions and we can now move into discussion. Ms. Martinez Garcia, you have a question for Ms. Brown?
I have a question for Ms. Flynn. Sherry, come back.
I was running as fast as I could.
I know the improvements is, they're much needed.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, there's a lot of situation going on. They've been in the news. I have been contacted by multiple residents living there.
Yes.
How will that be addressed? I, that may not have, I mean, I feel like it does correspond with the request that's being made.
Absolutely. I will tell you that we, in terms of actual oversight of the construction or the rehab, we won't have much say in that other than certain guidelines, federal guidelines have to be followed in terms of the bond allocation and so forth. So we will have folks that are on the ground watching over that. As far as every single improvement that would be made to each unit individually, I can't really speak to that. But certainly if we did not feel that, you know, these, these items were going to be addressed, then we wouldn't have agreed to issue the bonds because those bonds will be outstanding for at least 15 years and have to meet affordability requirements and all kinds of other things. So we will do whatever we can to make sure that, that those improvements are made. Yes, ma'am.
One question, well, one, I don't know if you're, I, I received a request from a family. They have a one-year-old that has asthma issues dealing with, they see. Then they send me pictures of a place, they're on-site, but they've closed their office. And they're holding, or they're threatening residents that they will victim if they complain or make their comments public. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Next thing is, are you confident in the managing company?
I am confident in the developer. I honestly don't know the management company, but it sounds like I need to get to know them better. But certainly anything that the Housing Finance Corporation does, you know, it is, we certainly make sure that everything is done right. And that is our intent. And I appreciate that being brought up because I had no idea that some of those things were going on.
They've been on TV several times this week.
Is that right?
With the conditioning issues.
Okay. All right. I will follow up with the developer then on that. Yes, ma'am, I sure will. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Joy.
Did I hear you say that this was going to close?
The bond transaction will close in September. Now, of course, they will have a period of time, I believe it's 18 months probably, to, to make all repairs. But I will certainly ask that they address these questions and issues with respect to air conditioning first and foremost because people cannot be living in units when it's 110 degrees outside with no AC.
Who is the developer?
The developer is, I mean, you were going to ask me that, and if I wasn't nervous, I could tell you, Millennial Housing Development. And they are located out of Ohio. Located out of Ohio. And they do have some experience in the state of Texas. And so we checked into them and felt like they would be a responsible developer. But again, there are opportunities that we have sometimes to be kind of general partners and have a little bit more interest in developments that we have not asked to serve in that capacity here. However, I think that as issuers of the bonds, we can certainly make sure that some of these really large items are addressed. And we will do that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if there are more questions for you. All right, any other questions on this? Ms. Patterson Harris? It's the voice upstairs.
Yes, sir. I mean, I just, when I, when there's the, she came across my desk advising me of the Ella Apartments, with this coming down the pike for them and needing some approval and whatnot. I got excited because I too know of some of the conditions that families have been living in. And most of them that I've been aware of have been with the, the structure and the deterioration and dilapidation of some of the areas in the home, under the cabinets, underneath the cabinets and all of those things. And once one thing starts, it, everything kind of rolls downhill. But I'm excited that the opportunity is here. I, I, I too will wait with bated breath to make sure that these get, things get done appropriately and that the families benefit. Do either of you know, and I thought that something else was said, saying that someone from the Ella Apartments, uh, was, management from Ella Apartments were there, but I guess I misheard. But does anyone know that while the, the revitalization and, and all is taking place, were tenants will be residing? Because I know that they cannot work on a property while the family is in that home, is actually in that apartment complex.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that's correct. And I think what I'd like to do and to submit to the mayor and counsel is a statement from the developer discussing exactly how they plan to do that, where, you know, if they have some idea of what's going to happen first and which, you know, there's 14 different buildings. So are they going to do like a mostly vacant building first so that then they can start moving, moving folks into that? And, and, you know, make improvements to that? I'm assuming that's what's going to happen because that will also save them money by doing it that way. But I would like to get something in writing from them just so we can do what we can do to hold them accountable. Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking.
And I'm sorry, and they, they may not be, they may not know, I don't know how they don't, but they may not know about some of these complaints about the air conditioning system, which I will also pass along.
That, that's quite a bit of money, about $80,000 per, per unit.
Yes, ma'am.
That's quite a bit. So I can, I'm trying to visualize some of the things that they could actually improve on or redo and repair, replace and whatever, that will really benefit so many of the families. So that's why I was curious as to what will happen then, because we don't want to shuffle them around too much because the things that they've had to contend with so far have already been difficult for them to deal with. So I, I just want to make this as smooth of a transition for them as possible.
Absolutely. I agree with you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Patterson Harris, any other questions?
No, sir. Just go to sit and wait and watch.
And watch.
Absolutely.
All right, well, we have a first and second on 7.11. Motion to approve 7.11? All in favor, please. Oh, Ms. Joy?
I had a, a question up here. Who owns these, this property? Who owns it?
I don't have the name of that organization, but I will find out and let you know. I don't remember because we were approached by the developer. So let me find out. It's probably another LLC, but who the members are of that LLC, I don't know. So let me find out.
Would you forward it to the, to the mayor?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, I will. I will do that.
Ms. Joy, it's Ella, Texas LLC owned out of Cleveland, Ohio.
And we don't know who the members are.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I, I just would reiterate what Councilwoman Patterson Harris has said. You've got some eyeballs on this.
I agree.
And I think that's what it's going to take, somebody to watch, because we've got two out-of-state entities dealing with this property with our people in it.
Right. Right. I will let them know. And I'll also let them know, I don't, you know, I don't know how much the management company reports to the owner. That can sometimes be an issue. So I don't know anything about the, the management company either. And I think we need to find that because they're, they're boots on the ground, so they need to be reporting to the owner what's going on with respect to air conditioning units and so forth. So.
All right, so I think what I'm hearing from counsel, from Ms. Martinez Garcia, Ms. Patterson Harrison, Ms. Joy, is we, I think collectively, it appears from the ownership that the management company or, and the instruction company may be related to the owner is because it's both, they're both out of Ohio. I think the word needs to get back to them and maybe through you, or maybe we.
Absolutely.
Statement through other channels, something needs to be done.
Absolutely.
And I think if they hear that from you, then that may be a strong statement from the council.
That will happen. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right.
Ms. Flynn, can I add that I would love to send you all the complaints that I've seen?
I would, honestly, I would like to see those and I would like to pass those along. Yes. Please. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. All right, motion has been first and seconded. I would, all in favor of 7.1? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.11 carries 7-0. All right, counsel, next on 7.12, similar situation. We will have a brief presentation by Ms. Brown, and then we will have a hearing on, a public hearing on 7.12, and then we will have a vote on the ordinance. Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. As you all will recall, at your last meeting, we, you approved a notice of intent for the creation of a reinvestment zone for Duraline LLC. They are going to be moving into the second speculative space in the Lubbock Business Park. You can see a map of their location here. The existing building, you can see on the north side of this property. They are also including some adjacent land to the south for storage and future expansion of their space. As a reminder, the reason for the creation of this reinvestment zone is we have received an application for a tax abatement from Duraline. The Lubbock Business Park is no longer in the state-designated enterprise zone program. And so in order to consider a tax abatement contract, we have to first create a reinvestment zone within which to apply that tax abatement. So again, map of the property here. Just a couple of reminders on the reinvestment zone, and this is all similar to what we just did with the reinvestment zone for X-FAB. The zone is designated for five years. In this particular case, the tax abatement that you will consider in a couple of weeks is also four or five years. And so they will expire at the same time. In order to be able to designate a reinvestment zone, there are some requirements that the state requires us to check off before you're able to consider, and those findings are listed on this slide. So the first being that the improvements are feasible and practical. You've got an outline here of the investment that Duraline plans to make in the facility. $22 million in property improvements, $32.5 million invested in new machinery and equipment. That designation would benefit the land and the city. And this is typically in the form of jobs. And so Duraline does plan to create 141 new jobs at this site by 2025. And then also that this site meets a criteria for a reinvestment zone, which it does. So again, we will ask you to hold a public hearing prior to the first reading of the ordinance designating the reinvestment zone today. Should you choose to move forward with the zone, the second reading, which will create the reinvestment zone, will be at your next meeting on July 11th, along with the state-required notice of intent to consider a tax abatement. Should you move forward with that, we will send a draft contract and the application to all of the taxing jurisdictions inside of the city as their notice of this consideration. And then you will actually consider the tax abatement contract on July, or on your July 25th meeting. With that, happy to answer any questions that you have. We do have representation from LITA here on behalf of the company. So if you have more specific questions related to Duraline and their plans, they are available for your questions as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes, sir.
All right, we will now move to 7.12. Texas Tax Code requires a public hearing to allow interested persons to speak and present evidence for or against the designation of an area as a reinvestment zone. 7-12 is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of said reinvestment zone. I will now open the public hearing as to 7.12. If you would like to step forward and speak for or against, you may step forward at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to 7.12, and we will move to the ordinance for 7.13. Is there a motion to approve 7.13? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. I'm assuming a second by Ms. Martinez Garcia. All right. Any further discussion or questions? I think Mr. Osborne is here. Ms. Brown's available. All right, all in favor of approval of 7.13? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.13 carries 7-0. With that, it's 3:15, and we will be adjourned.